Good evening. Tonight, we're opening to recontinue the Park Central 40B public hearing. We're, I think, are we going to start on the traffic study program?
Yes, sir.
At this part of it? Okay, so I'll let you go forward with that, please.
Okay. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, when we were last here, I think it was on December 2nd...
Is your microphone on?
Yeah, it's on.
Okay.
When we were last here, on December 2nd, we pulled back our traffic study because there were some corrections that had to be made. I understand that new traffic studies were circulated to the board within the last day or two. Kevin Dandrade from TEC is here tonight to make a formal presentation of the updated traffic study.
Due to what you did last week, I kept the study and didn't turn it out to nobody until tonight, so tomorrow, we'll hand it out to the other boards and stuff. But we held it due to the fact that last week, we had it taken away from us again. So you go forward, sir. You can use the microphone that's up there.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name's Kevin Dandrade. I'm a principal at T E C, and I am a principal of the firm. You've heard previously from Rebecca Brown. She's one of our project managers and senior engineers. Unfortunately, she couldn't be here to present this evening because she's about to give birth, so stepped in. And what I'd like to do is just to summarize a little bit of where we've been in prior studies, prior reviews, and what was updated for the board very recently to look at the characteristics related to traffic for the site proposal. Just in hitting rewind briefly, there was a study prepared by our office, and it is dated May 19th, 2014. That summarized the impacts from the elements of the 40B project. There was some back and forth with MASTDOT. It was peer reviewed by your consultant, G P I. There was a very detailed response to comments package that our office had made on August 19th of 2014. And then in looking at some of the site access alternatives, and from what I understand from the client is that you had looked at, okay, well gee, what does the master plan level of traffic look like with the mix of uses in concert with what is being reviewed for the 40B? So with that in mind, we had prepared the most recent version of the traffic study that was issued to the town. And what that summarizes is a mix of uses that are being proposed for the overall site activity. It is a mix of the apartments, the condominiums, and townhouses, the assisted living, and the hotel. Now, the density of those uses was slightly conservative in the study, and it's traditionally done, so the actual proposal is just slightly under what we had projected. We had looked at the traffic that's generated by each of those uses individually. We aggregate them together. We look at the distribution characteristics of traffic, so how they access and egress from the site. And each of those three is slightly different based on where they are in the site, but also how those different uses access the adjacent roadway system. On page 18 of the study, as you review it, and this is really meant as an overview of traffic, the overall site characteristics, the sum of all the uses, is expected to generate just over 3,200 trips per day. That's the sum of both the ins and the outs of all the different uses. In the weekday morning peak hour, there's just under 250, 247 trips. As you can imagine, with a primarily residential project, you have most of those as egress in the morning, heading towards work in most cases, and then arriving at the end of the day.
Excuse me, what are you considering the peak hour?
The peak hour is traditionally, what we do is we count and we analyze the peak hour between 7:00 and 9:00 a.m. and 4:00 and 6:00 p.m., the traditional commuter peak hours, when traffic is the heaviest on Route 9 and some of those other adjacent roadways. So the morning is about 250. The evening peak hour is about 300 per hour. And on the Saturday, it's also just over 300 per hour. And that is important to understand because when we look at the impacts of the 40B, the impacts of the overall project, we have most of our traffic coming to and from Route 9. So just as the locus here that's also provided in the study, we have Route 9 east-west, Flag Road, Deerfoot, Main Street, and we're just down over here. And then the site itself, just off Central Park. There was an extensive count program that was done for the original study. It was supplemented with some other daily counts at the same time in order to look at the traffic operations and the anticipated delays on the stretch. As you all know, as anyone tries to access Route 9, there's always a certain level of delay when you're at a stop sign as you enter in the traffic stream. When we look at the distribution characteristics for the site itself, and I have a number of graphics, I can go through them all, but what it boils down to is when we look at the census data, the types of uses, we've estimated, and your independent peer review consultant has confirmed, that the approximate 15% that would come to and from the north along Flag Road was a reasonable estimate based on the regional travel trends. Because of the median divided highway on Route 9, obviously, there's going to be different travel patterns. And I know that there was some concern in the past, and maybe still is some concern, about the estimates for those distribution trends. And just as a, for instance, this morning, in looking at some different Google Map applications or Waze applications, looking at a point on Flag Road right near the site entrance, in looking at what it had recommended. So if you're looking at the traditional user that may rely on their phone app for where to go, at 7:16 this morning, at that site entrance, the quickest time into Boston was to use the 495 ramps to the Mass Pike and head further eastbound. Also, similarly, using the Waze app at 7:40 a.m., it gave the same route as the path of least delay in going from the site to all points to the east, including plugging in things like downtown Framingham or other closer points that are more localized. The safety characteristics of the new intersecting roadway between Park Central and Flag, I know it went through an extensive review before, those characteristics are still the same geometry, the same proposal with full access on Flag Road that you had recently seen. The safety characteristics there, we can meet the ASHTO recommended sightlines for the side street from a safety standpoint. We know that the characteristics of Flag Road in itself is, you know, relatively narrow road, 25 miles per hour. The actual operating speeds on Flag are actually higher than that, and that's what we have to use as the metric for assessing those sightlines. So where the site intersection... The site meets Flag here, obviously, you can see all the way down to Route 9, and at that point, traffic is not going the 85th percent of, in the upper 30s, because it's just making that turn at a slower speed. We will have clear sightlines looking in this direction, but in general, knowing that the culverts rate just to the northwest, I guess it's the north, of the site driveway location, that's something that today helps control speed. There's a comment about street trees, parking on the roadway, other things that also have a way of controlling speed on Flag Road that if any of those elements are widened, it would only look to beg for increased speed. So based on the characteristics of the site access, the things that we traditionally look at as traffic engineers, that will meet the safety guidelines that we're asked to look at. But that access scheme of providing the apartment and townhome primary access egress at the Flag and out to Route 9, that's something that was requested by MASTDOT. And as we look at the characteristics of that with the master plan, we had balanced the traffic volumes that come out to Route 9. So they're about the same, knowing that traffic is going to try to seek the path of least resistance out to that major roadway. You probably have seen by now the recent widening and striped improvements that MASTDOT just completed that really enhances that acceleration and deceleration lane by the Cumberland Farms there. It's nice to see that they got that in place before winter, newly striped, to provide that extra acceleration room coming off of Flag and onto Route 9 westbound. One of the challenges in when we look at the traffic engineering results, the analysis results for the stop sign control of Route 9, and what's provided in the report is conservative because it doesn't take into account the gaps that are created at the adjacent signal where for a major access, you would make the U-turn and come back to Flag Road. The presence of that signal on Route 9, when it has the red stop light on Route 9 westbound, that understandably creates some gaps to allow easier platoons of traffic to get off the side streets. So that can't be modeled in a traditional way that you see in a capacity analyses, but that is a real benefit that I expect the delay results to be better than what's actually documented. So in terms of operating characteristics, knowing that we're going to be introducing some traffic to these side streets, the average delay, as we look into that horizon year, about nine years in the future, as requested by MASTDOT, it's about a minute. And as we introduce the traffic from the site, it'll be somewhere around two to three minutes in the morning as you try to access Route 9 westbound on a major movement. And that's similar for both Flag and for Park Central, and that's the access that was dictated to us by MASTDOT.
... a car, right? Two to three minutes per car? Excuse me, sir, you need to use the microphone if you want to make a comment, but I'm going to ask you to wait until after they're done with their presentation. Thank you. I apologize, my mic wasn't on. Wait for you to finish their presentation, and then you can make a comment.
So as far as a couple of the recommendations that stay consistent with what we had looked at in the first study and following the peer review comments in '14, there are certain elements that should be done, some of which, regardless of the proposed project, like the warning signs on Flag approaching for the road narrows at the culvert, some brush and clearing to open up the sightlines. And at Blackthorn, that is also something that's consistent as far as the recommendation for putting in an always stop that will also calm traffic in that area, where traffic on Flag is not required to stop today, but it is challenging to get off of Blackthorn because of the walls that are very close to the edge of the road that block those sightline openings. And I am intimately familiar with that because, growing up and for a very long time, I had a dear friend on Bantry that I would visit more than once a week, and as I learned how to drive, I would come out to that same location, which hasn't changed in a very long time. So having the always stop control at that location is a good safety enhancement, and although the history of crashes is not there, it's one of those things that should be there. And it should be there regardless of the project, but we can implement that as one element of safety mitigation that would help enhance the characteristics on Flag. Apart from that, that's a summary of the new study. The findings are essentially the same as they were in '14 for the smaller project because with 15% of the traffic coming to and from the north, still, it's adding some additional traffic with the master plan, but not a considerable addition to what we had before. Thank you.
All right. One thing first is I have talked to a peer consultant that did the last one, and is tomorrow, he will get mailed this, and in a week or so, he will get back to us with his comments on that.
Okay.
And most likely, at the next meeting we have, we'll invite him to the meeting to make a presentation. And once he gets us the report back, then we'll get it out to individual people to be able to review it prior to that meeting.
Excellent.
Okay. One other issue before we go further is, at the meeting Monday night with the planning board, it was one of the neighbors brought up an issue on parking on Parkerville on Flag Road, and the biggest issue was commercial vehicles, and most likely, it's landscapers. And I've thought about it very seriously, and I'd like to see if the board would agree. I would like to send a letter to the Highway Department and Police and Fire and see if they would consider the fact of putting a no parking signs on Flag Road for commercial vehicles only. I don't want to make it so residential people aren't allowed that live there that can park, but to prevent commercial people to do so, and basically, it's landscapers, but doing other commercial vehicles. So if the board would think that, you know, would agree to that, I'd like to be able to send a letter to them, and we get our next meeting, we'll discuss it and see where it could go. Because I think, I mean, it was brought up by one of the neighbors, and they thought it was, you know, a major issue, and I ended, personally, I've seen it before, so I know what they're talking about, especially where the road is so narrow. So...
How about UPS vehicles, things like that? UPS vehicles that would stop only for a minute or two minutes? I mean, a lot of times, we have cable companies, Verizon trucks, that need access to stuff on the street. I mean, we'd have to really think this out.
Well, that would be...
Because that would force, that would force these vehicles to park in people's driveways.
As far as the power companies, that would be under an emergency thing, but I would think that if we get a recommendation from the Highway and Police Department, and then we go forward and bring up the issues which you stated, and see what they say on it and what we have at that time.
Mr. Chairman, one thing you might want to consider in making such a request is to limit it to certain hours. No commercial vehicles stopping or parking between 7:00 a.m. and 9:00 a.m., and same thing maybe between 4:00 and 6:00. This is just a suggestion because then it allows for your UPS, your Verrisons, your others, and it even allows for the landscaper who's going to be there at 2:00 in the afternoon, okay, to do that. But that's just a suggestion. I've seen that in other communities where you limit the no parking or no standing to the busiest times of day.
I think that my original thing is the fact that we get the letter to the three departments and start from there and get it back, and then discuss and talk about the other issues of what would be done and what would be a recommendation to do.
Well, why don't we get, why don't we get a letter for them to recommend to us how to handle that street?
That's what I'm going to do. I'm going to write a letter to them to make a recommendation...
Okay, fine.
... on the, on that issue on the street. Okay?
So just for Flag?
Yes, just on Flag.
And so you want them to make comments to us that we would want to incorporate then?
Yes.
If they have any comments?
If we have, you know, we get to that point.
Okay.
Okay. Do the board members have any more, any comments for... The other thing on the traffic study, we just received it, of course, and then, I mean, it's going to take a while for us to review it all. So when we set up our next meeting, there may be some issues of discussion the board members will want to make, which will be done at that time. So really, right now, I don't, personally, I have no reason to ask any questions of what we've got until I read the study versus the last study we read. And the board members, how to...
I have a couple of questions. Did you take into account things like school buses, you know, access in and out, egress in and out of that property? Not necessarily, because I know you gave numbers of 246 in the peak a.m. and...
Yep.
Does that take into account the extra type of vehicles, like trash trucks and school buses?
It does. Yeah, and what is employed when we look at the numbers here are standard rates from the Institute of Transportation Engineers, which looks at the wealth of residential data and other types of land uses. And in regards to condominiums, assisted living, apartments, single-family homes, they all consider the total trip generation for, say, a neighborhood. So if it had 20 single-family homes, say, it would be based on a count that looked at a cul-de-sac or something. In other, more dense uses, apartments and condominiums, similarly, it's all users, all types of visitors, residents, buses, trucks, you know, like FedEx, like you said, it's the counts are based on all types.
Now, with these trips, the 246 and the 300, all these numbers you threw out, did I hear you right? Did you say that you figured 15% would go to the left pulling out as opposed towards Route 9?
That's correct. And that's based in part on the census data that looks at, for those that live in Southborough, where do they work? And it's traditionally, and that's what, when we do studies with MASTDOT and others, they ask for that type breakout for residential type uses to be able to project. So also, when we look at the distribution trends and the path of least resistance or least delay, you know, unless there was a crash or some other unforeseen congestion, certainly, they could go a different way. But when we were asked to look at normal traffic patterns, normal usage, to look at those average conditions that everybody can expect from the project.
Right. I mean, you know, I'm familiar with these industrial parks to the north into Marlboro, and to me, it would make sense for people to just curl onto Route 9 and then get on 495 and go to off at San Morano or anything heading north. So I don't anticipate for the bulk of the residents that need to work in Marlboro, for instance, to have to try to scramble through Flag Road and...
And I actually did one of those, looking to go to Marlboro Center.
Yeah.
And it still said to get on 495.
Yeah.
So...
It makes sense, because I know there was some concern in some previous meetings. The other thing is, I just want to make a comment about, because I know at the previous meeting that you weren't around, there was some, there was some talk about Flag Road at Route 9, the closure of it, that, you know, we wanted to find out what the state's opinion on the long-term aspects of keeping that intersection open. Clearly, you know, with the work now being done and finished, I think, right there, I took a look at it, I spent some time there in the last week, just walking it, kind of seeing exactly the extensive work they did in widening that area in front of Cumberland Farms. Clearly, it looks like they have a long-term commitment to that intersection, allowing it to maintain, to keep open, and to allow the local traffic to get onto Route 9 and get off of Route 9.
And we've heard the same thing, and we will be actively coordinating with them as we seek a permit from their office, but also as we review the characteristics of the environmental notification form.
Okay. All right, I have no other questions.
No more questions? Well, you all said.
I'm good.
Thank you.
And as we go in the future, as far as the issue you brought up about school buses, that has to be entertained later on because it's private property, and it's the same thing we had to do with...
Madison.
With Bob Moss's project of getting permission for the school buses to go on the property and everything, but that's something that will happen down the road as we go forward. Okay? Any town people that would like to make any comments on anything on traffic or... Yeah? Okay. Any of the residents that would like to?
Chris Perkins, Wontara Road. There was a figure of 85% of the traffic from Flag is going west. What is that based on?
Excuse me, would one of you give him your mic so he could use it, please?
Sure, take that one. It comes right out of her mouth.
Because of the access limitations where you can't cross Route 9, a lot of the traffic regionally is going to access 495. A smaller percentage is going to proceed beyond 495 and Route 9 west to other points west of the highway. But for major regional access, including those that jump down to the Pike to go east or west, the predominant trends, having to turn right out of Flag or out of Park Central, is that primary access point, and then that 85% distributes from there to the different highway ramps for different types of U-turn movements, or regionally, to, say, points down to the Pike or elsewhere. I do have a graphic that shows that. So within the traffic study, Figure 4 presents the distribution for the three major elements of different types of distribution for the site between the residential component, the sum of the apartments and the townhomes. Separately, on a different sheet, is the assisted living, which is still a local residential type of feel, but it is on the lower part of Park Central. And then finally, the hotel use, which, when you look at visitors to the hotel, they're going to be oriented to and from Route 9, and they're going to be more familiar with the regional highway network than any of the local roads. So there's a slightly different distribution trend there. So when we look at access to the site, the 85% coming to and from Route 9 from the major highway destinations, and then 15% to and from Flag Road to the north, that's, I think, what the gentleman is asking about here.
A concern I have is, as a resident, I often need to go east on Route 9, and it's no small trick to do that from this neighborhood. You either have to go backroads through the town, take Deerfoot south and do a U-turn, or you head west and do a U-turn as soon as you can, which is the Cloverleaf. And I hate to do that, it doesn't feel safe when I do it. And I'm thinking of the increased numbers of increased traffic doing that, taking a U-turn, for example, on the Cloverleaf, that seems like an unsafe situation.
Well, quite a bit of that, you can see the 30% at the bottom of the sheet here. A good chunk, a third of that traffic that's going to be generated is heading to points south and doesn't have to do the U-turn type movement. But that's there as something that we anticipate happening, we've tried to be reasonable in how to present it for travel habits that people would normally use. I've taken the Deerfoot, loop around, and then come back on Route 9 west, only to do a U-turn again to head east, and I understand that potential. But we also look at the likely travel patterns, travel times in making those movements. So I, the other option, you see the 12% on the far left hand, those are really for destinations further to the west, but with computer and research drive just beyond that, that is yet another potential for the U-turn type movement. But in general, these numbers, you know, the I T E numbers are conservative. You can ask your traffic engineer or any other traffic engineer that they are usually higher than what you would actually see, but the breakout of the regional distribution of traffic, I'm very confident that will be primarily focused on Route 9.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else would like to make a comment?
Howard Rose, to Bantry Road. We've heard that before. Couple of questions. One, did this take into account the three-bedroom condos being over 60% on the site?
As far as the way I T E generates the number of trips, it's done regardless of the number of bedrooms, so it's all per unit, without reference to one, two, or three bedrooms. The data has sources that include all types and all sizes, but it's not something that where a three-unit generates more than a two or one, it's aggregated based on the number of units by itself.
So based on the census data that is now 15 years old, the demographics in this town is... has changed drastically. So those three-bedroom units are now going to have many families with two people leaving during the day. Your data doesn't even have one person from every, between the condos and the 40B, you don't even have one car from every unit leaving at a peak hour during the study. So I think those numbers are questionable. I understand they're soft, I think they're incredibly soft.
I would encourage you to ask your peer review agent those types of questions, and I'm sure that they will confirm the reasonableness, first of all, the conservatism of the trip generation, and reaffirm what they've already said for the distribution characteristics. I would implore you to get that professional peer review opinion.
We'll do that when we do some...
I'm actually a little disappointed he's not here tonight to hear these comments. I'll help him watch the recording to see our comments as he goes through this. I think one of the things drastically missing from this report is a major study of what happens this way. There's still no mention of bicycle or pedestrian traffic. There's no discussion of that or what safety precautions are there. There are no sidewalks, there's no room to make sidewalks. And I question your 85-15% route. Yeah, I'm good there, thank you. And I'm going by your data. This is the existing non-build data. How does the traffic enter, exit Blackthorn now?
As far as the mix coming out of that subdivision of the single-family homes, there is some going to, and I think the percentage is higher than what we'd anticipate being closer to Route 9, and with primary access so close to Route 9.
And that's where I have to disagree with you. This neighborhood has figured it out. Almost 80% of us go into town because of the access here and the challenges, or we're going to the schools or everything else that's on that road. I think it's a very bold assumption to say that 85% of the people doing the exact same thing, in the same living conditions that they are, are going to go the other way. The numbers show here that the town's already figured it out the fastest way, and your data for your ways in that thing is on a holiday weekend. So it is the fastest way to go on a holiday weekend to go 495. If you're going into Boston on a normal day, when 495 and the Mass Pike backs up well past where they meet, anyone in town will tell you the way to go is that way. So that 85 number, I realize it's, it's a computer model, but it's still subjective. And I think if you look at your own data, you find that it's actually the exact opposite, that 85% of the traffic actually go the other way and get on 9 at Framingham because it's faster to get there. So I would ask that that study be done by our peer reviewer to see what's really going on. The other challenge with that is the, the counting machines that were put down, that data is three years old as well. That, this is the perfect idea. Those, that data and the growth models were based on an assumption of growth for the area. Now is the time to redo those counters and see what the real growth was and what's coming because it didn't take into account some of the things going in other towns and the cut-throughs getting to and from north. This town has the unique opportunity to check our data now. We should take advantage of that and see what's really going on for growth and what's going on in these streets. So again, we should study what's really going on here, answer and reflect on the real traffic, because there's two schools up here that kids walk to school. What is the safety factor there? Because I don't think it's, whatever it was, you know, 40 cars or something going down, whatever the 15% was, it's more like the two, 300 cars, which I still think is like for the 3,000 trips a day, there's, I think there's substantially more traffic that's going to end up down Flag than what you're predicting.
Mr. Chair, your peer review consultant has looked at this already when it was just the 40B component, and many of those elements were confirmed. I would anticipate that their professional opinion wouldn't change in a matter of one year. But what I can tell you, just as minor rebuttal, is that traffic trends have dropped continuously in the past few years on many roadways around the state. And when you look at, you can go on MassDOT's website to look at a lot of those trends, or the Regional Planning Commission's data to look at those trends. And we look at it all across the Commonwealth in seeing that. But yet, we still project a 1% per year growth for the traffic that we counted. And there's nothing in isolation here that suggests to me that it warrants recounting because it, there hasn't been a new major commercial or office development that is going to influence anything between Route 30 and Route 9 in this area. And I just, I don't think it's a very worthwhile effort to go do extensive additional counts at the applicant's expense for something that your peer review agent could confirm was reasonably prepared.
When the peer review was done, it was also done on additional project above the 40B when he did that. Because it was, at that time, there was a discussion of two additional 40B projects. So that was also done through, that opinion when he approved went through it also at that time, not just the 40B existing.
Exactly. And if you look back at the report, we actually detailed the potential for traffic to get introduced to this area for, I want to say it was 10 individual projects within the area, not just Southborough but Westborough, et cetera, that had the potential to add traffic within that nine-year horizon. So it was very detailed, and again, I'm sure GPI can confirm for you that, the reasonableness of those projections.
I think the proper way to go forward with this is that any of the abouters that would like to write a letter with comments and get it to Secretary as soon as possible, and then we will send it out to the peer reviewer to also do that. So when he comes in front of us next time, he'll be able to make comments on what you're requesting.
That's fair, we'll do that as well. I just have one more comment at this time. And Mr. Eagle, it's to yours. I question that new lane on 9 as a good thing. They've taken away the barrier that was cemented that actually gave you a break in that turn lane so you can get out on Flag. What it's become now is an on-ramp starting for 495, starting back before Wendy's. And if you sit out there during rush hour as people get more familiar with it and figure it out, you'll see them cutting right and sliding and taking it all the way up onto 495. So it doesn't give you the opportunity to get out anymore. It gives you a better way to get hit by someone accelerating, trying to get on 495 rather than the break.
Well...
And I've almost been hit three times this week on just that.
Well, I think, I think, I think it was presented that, that we have to take into account that traffic light that's back on...
And that is the only chance you get out on, you are correct.
Well...
But to say that that turn lane is a good thing that gives you a better accelerate, decelerate...
It certainly does, because I have, I live on the other side of town. I live off of Parkerville Road on the, on the eastbound side of Route 9, and I, I take advantage of that traffic light back there, too. So I don't, I don't have, I don't have the ability on Parkerville Road, when you're exiting onto Route 9, to have that wide entrance like we just built for, for right in front of Cumberland Farms. I have a big gully to my right. So I have a much narrower spot, but I wait, like most people, to the, for the brakes on the traffic. And I suspect that, that the people off Flag Road will do the same.
Well, we have no choice, but the brake now comes with someone all of a sudden sliding over and coming at you. I just want to keep in mind, as people, I did a count the other day, when we complete this project, there are actually more units and more housing units going into this development than there are in that entire part of town. So the traffic is going to essentially double. And I'm talking, if you count Redgate, Deerfoot, all of those out from 30 in, there's actually more actual dwellings going on this piece of property than there are in all the single-family houses in that area. These numbers still seem incredibly light based on that. We are going to literally double our traffic on this road at this intersection. Not even for us, but for the people living in this neighborhood. If you're five cars, five, six cars deep waiting to get on the Flag, now you're blocking the ramp onto their property. So they can't even get out of the property as well. I think we really need to study this properly and look more and look at these numbers aggressively, both not only at the 9 section, which the state's going to take care of, we need to look at our local roads. And now with all these three-bedrooms coming in, there's all families that are going to come right out here, because this is where the schools are. This number is incredibly light and needs to be adjusted. And this road needs to be adjusted and looked at for bicycles and pedestrians in a very serious manner. Because this is not, has not addressed it at all. Thank you.
No comment.
Okay. So the thing is that, like I stated prior to this, that you can take and get a letter to us. So when it goes to our peer review, that there'll be something they'll look at. And when they come to our next meeting, then these issues will be discussed by both parties and, and any questions by the abouters or residents. Yes, sir?
John Green, Ten Terra Road. Can you hear me all right? I've got a number of different questions, and I'm in support of Mr. De Petri, you know, being able to develop something at the site. My other comment is, I think that we need to do it responsibly. And I think that the board and, you know, whether it be the planning board, the town planner, the ZBA, really has to take a look at the density of this. And number one issue is going to be traffic. I completely agree with Howard that these numbers are extremely light. When you think about adding 360 units to this side of town, majority of them or half of them being three-bedroom units, to tell me that there's going to be, how many did we say? 247 cars egressing per, is that per hour? At peak time?
Yep.
Per hour. So 247 egressing per hour, there's probably a split to Route 9. If you're going to say that 85% of those are going to go right to Route 9, right? You can probably only have about six cars that can back up before that entrance is going to be stopped, correct?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
Plus the traffic that's, that's still coming in that direction. And we're going to be waiting, you're going to be waiting, what was the number that you gave me? Three to five minutes? Three minutes per car?
It'll be two to three minutes per vehicle accessing from Flag on the Route 9 westbound during the peak without taking account for the gaps in the signal.
All right. So 85% of 24 is, 247 is roughly 160 cars, correct? 160 cars in an hour going right. And they're, and they're all going to wait three minutes to get on Route 9.
Well, that's not taking into account the traffic light. That's...
There is no traffic light, Mr. Eagle.
There is a traffic light.
Where?
A half a mile before that, there's a traffic light.
If you sit there in the morning at the peak hours and know how much time between that traffic light, when that traffic light opens up, Madison Place lets go. Madison Place lets go, goes left, and everybody, you literally have maybe 30 seconds before that traffic light catches up. And I'm just being honest with you. I mean, you can sit there and you can do it in the morning. Everybody can drive out there, you can take a look. The other thing is, is that the traffic lanes that they've redone are extremely unsafe because people are actually passing in that right lane. It's not being used as an on-ramp. It's being used as, how fast can I get by everybody to get onto 495? Or how fast can I get by everybody to slam on my brakes to get into Cumberland Farms? I am concerned about getting out there as is. I mean, this is without this project happening. This is a problem in town now. Same thing going left on Flag, from Blackthorn to Deerfoot. Extremely narrow, extremely windy. It's not a safe area, right? So if the traffic pattern, as Howard mentioned, is actually going in the other direction, because we all know, if I'm going to the Mass Pike and I'm heading eastbound, I'm going left. I'm not going right. Because there's no way I'm getting out on Route 9, and then to turn around on 495 to sit in traffic going back the other way. Everybody goes left. You either go to Deerfoot or you go out to Main Street. It's the way you go. Same thing with going to Marlborough. You mentioned the center of Marlborough, you go Sears Road. And I don't think that the people in town, per se, understand what impact this is going to have for the entire north side of Southborough. So when we look at density and we look at how many units we're going to put in here, and what we're going to do from a traffic perspective, you need to think it out. You can't just make a ration, a rash decision based on numbers that, you know, to be honest with you, don't even make sense. I mean, if you use common sense, you have to understand that these numbers are way off. And, and you really have to make a decision on how are you going to make it safe? Because the way we're proposing, it's not going to be safe. Right? So put a light in at Route 9, go to, go to MassDOT, put a light in at Route 9 at the Cumberland Farms. There's a lot of folks that have a light at Route 9 before you hit a major intersection like 495. Madison Place, half the size, has a light. Half the size. Less than half the size. Right? I'm all for Mr. De Petri developing this land. I have no problem with that. My family is from builders, right? But I can't imagine, you know, the pure volume of this project working the way that we have it today. So I think you really need to consider this, rather than try to push this through without, without considering it.
Well, that's what the peer review will help us with.
Well, the peer review already happened, and the peer review told us everything's fine. And, you know, you look at those numbers, how many, how many folks leave Blackthorn Road in the morning?
That is a single-family home subdivision.
It is.
Different characteristics from the project that is being proposed. But it is representative of the number of homes that is in that based on the data that we use. So as far as the allegations of it being soft numbers or not being realistic, that is something that your peer reviewer can also confirm for you, is how those existing trips that are generated by that closed network at Blackthorn is representative of what's traditionally there for single-family homes. With town, townhomes and apartments, the same manual breaks out these other uses. And I have absolutely no doubt, because we've aggregated them all individually, that your peer review consultant will 100% agree with how we did the trip generation for the site. No question.
How many, how many cars leave Blackthorn in the morning?
And to clarify what the gentleman said before, there are not 247 vehicles egressing during the morning peak hour. That's the total of the ins and outs.
Okay.
We have 83 in and 164 out. And I stand by those numbers all day long, and I look forward to your peer review consultant's comments.
164 on 360 units? That's, that's the number?
I don't have any additional comments for you, Mr. Chairman.
And how many leave Blackthorn? Because that data was there.
It's, it's all summarized within the report.
I don't have a copy of the report.
Total leaving in the morning peak hour is 21 trips total for that entire neighborhood.
21 trips, how many houses in the neighborhood?
Forty-three houses. And that...
Three to four bedroom houses.
Actually helps prove my position. The normal trip generation rate for the rates that we rely on is approximately one trip per single-family home. So the numbers that we've used, that is roughly half of the, what the standards say. So we have a conservatively prepared study.
So let me just ask you a quick question on the, you said that, that peak hours, like the chairman asked you before, it started about 7 o'clock, you said?
Yes, traditionally...
Because that seems awfully, for someone that works in Boston, that seems awfully late.
As far as the peaking...
A lot of people in town leave at 5:30, 6 o'clock. So that would, so all those people, that percentage of those people that work in Boston, that have to be at work by 8:30, let's say, or 8 o'clock, there's no way they're going to make this, this group, right?
What I can tell you is that when you have all the different types of users, not just employees, but people that already got to work and hop in a truck and make deliveries or, you know, make other business-related trips, the actual peaking event, when you look at the graphs of what traffic does, traffic peaks in the morning peak hour sometime traditionally. And every road can be slightly different, but it's not a lot different. The peak occurs somewhere between 7:00 and 9:00 AM and 4:00 and 6:00 PM. The same thing when we count the users, the uses that contribute traffic to that area. It's all in the manuals, broken out by the expected trips and the distribution of ins and outs for all different types of time periods and the daily periods as well. And that's, that's the foundation of our report. But the comments that have been generated about the number of homes versus the number of trips that we've actually counted only proves that the numbers that we use are conservative. Because at a rate of about half a trip per home, per peak hour, and it should be one, then the IT rates are almost double. So it only helps demonstrate that the numbers that we've prepared are not just reasonable but conservative in looking at those future traffic conditions.
Is it, is it, is it not, is it not a professional process that there is a standard category in which this is done and those numbers are generated by? Is that...
That is absolutely 100% correct. You know, as a professional engineer, our office, Rebecca stamped this one, but we have to stamp these reports as a professional engineer in the Commonwealth. We go through training, we have technical sessions as an industry of transportation engineers that helps refine things. And we, by nature, are conservative. You know, if you talk to many engineers, you have that belt and suspenders approach. That's the same as we look at how much traffic it's going to generate. It's no different. We want to make sure that we are on the upside as the responsibility that we have to try to reasonably, reasonably predict the upper end of what people will see on a normal basis.
So even based on the 263, a three minutes per car trying to get out on Route 9, you're going to have a major backup. The other, the other thing is, is that COVID that's there is only 17 and a half feet wide, right? So if you get a bus or a truck or... So if you get a bus or a truck or whatever it is that's stuck in traffic in that culvert, then what's that gonna do to traffic going the other way?
What do you mean by the, what do you mean by the culvert?
There's a, there's a little bridge that's there that barely fits two cars across. It's 17 and a half feet wide. Your standard SUV is seven feet wide. Right? So that doesn't leave very much room. That's an SUV, never mind a bus. So what happens when a bus is parked there, right? Trying to get out on Route 9 or a landscape truck or whatever it is? Is there a plan to open up that culvert?
Now, that could be something that can be discussed in the future when we get, maybe that's something that might have to be done.
Yeah, it absolutely needs to be done. And that's what I'm saying. I'm not saying that I'm against the project, right? I do think it's, it's a little dense for the area, right? Especially with the traffic numbers. But the safety concerns are unbelievable. Like for us to put this, this many units in this area and expect that traffic to go down Flag Road, that narrow road with the trees, with the bridge, and then out onto Route 9, it's crazy. It's absolutely crazy. And I sat at the planning board the other night, and we're worried about ice skating. We're worried about ice skating. That's what we're worried about. It's amazing. Thank you.
Howard, rest of you Bantry again, two quick questions. If we're going through with this, I'm concerned if we have that same backup, people trying to get in, is there talk of doing a turn lane, a left turn off of 9 into the unit? So that if people can't get into the unit because the traffic's backed out, the people on Flag trying to go can continue going?
Mr. Chairman, there's no proposal for it because it is not warranted, based on the limited traffic of through traffic that would be behind any of those left turners into the project. It wouldn't be warranted by any, any perspective of the traditional means of looking at the need for putting in something like a left turn lane. It's just not necessary.
Well, respectfully, we just said that the re-traffic backed up far enough, and if there was a bus blocking that culvert, you can't get through. So if there was a way to get a left turn so we could, and then block that, then we can open that up, there is room to do that, and respectfully, and I don't want to speak to him, but I believe Mr. De Petrie owns the piece of property on that corner that's sitting there doing nothing, there is room, if he's willing to do it, to at least make that a little more accessible. Just something to consider, it does not have to be answered tonight, just something to think about.
I think the proper way to go forward with this is wait until we hear back from our consultant, and at that time, continue these issues that you people have and see where they are at it would also, and then we'll go forward with it from that point.
If you'll allow me one more question while I have an expert here.
Yep.
Your professional opinion, I know this, everyone says this isn't likely, but we've seen it, what would happen if the entrance to Flag Road off of 9 was closed? I know everyone says it's not gonna happen, but the almost closed Park Central, for that reason they considered it. If traffic gets bad, that is a likely scenario that needs to be addressed. In your professional opinion, if that happened and all that traffic from the entire unit had to go down Flag the other way, what would happen?
Mr. Chairman, I'm not gonna answer that question only because it's, it's not appropriate because it's not currently being planned by us, it's not currently being planned by Mass Dot.
The thing on the question, which came up at our last meeting also, is the fact that Mr. De Petrie has to file with Mass Highway for his permitting and everything, and at that time, he has stated that he would ask that question, and Mr. De Petrie's attorney also agreed to do that. So when they get to that point, that'll be done, and when they get permitted for that, that result will come back to us at that time. There is another issue, which I don't, I know if everybody who knows or whatever, but there is a plan to do reconstruction on all those roads by Mass Highway.
I don't, that suppose would include the flyover for a left exit onto 495, which would solve everything?
No, but from, from the Marlboro exit down to the Mass Turnpike and on Route 9, that's something that's been, been on thing, and I think Jennifer at Town Planner has been to some of those meetings, I know that I have, of this, something that's in the future, when, I have no idea. But when they do their seminal with the Highway Department, Mass Highway, then they agree to ask that question, that'll come back in front of us, and it's something we can discuss at that time.
Seems all very crystal-bollish and very hopeful for something of the future that could really impact this town severely, so, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, any further questions? So what is gonna happen with this is, like I said, we will send it to our consultant, and he said that he would get it done in a few weeks, and then we will get it back, and we'll set up our next, another meeting for this. In between, if the neighbors do wanna request, I'd appreciate it that you get the letter to us as soon as possible so it can get sent out and be done.
Mr. Chairman, with respect to any inquiries or specific questions that you get from neighbors, we would just like to be notified so that we can get a copy of those questions so that our consultant can also have that in advance and be able to address those issues.
Definitely, there's no problem. That'll, that'll happen.
Mr. Chairman, I can make a couple of comments and some of the-
You need to turn that mic on, please.
It is, it's on, yeah. It's on. Just a couple of comments in regards with the neighbors we're talking about. The traffic study's not, and it's been around for 12 to 18 months, the numbers haven't changed, they've only gotten better, to tell you the truth. So this shouldn't be a surprise to anyone about the counts going left, going right, going on Route 9, the alleged delay times. They were all present and had their chance to speak about the size of the project, the density. This board, along with the neighbors, approved 158 townhomes. We're down to 135. So I don't, I don't know how much lower they think we're gonna get, but I'm not gonna get any lower than that. I've already given those up because we had to. Now, taking another 10 or 20 units out of there isn't gonna change the traffic at all. The traffic's here, it's not gonna get any better. This is progress. I mean, if you don't want traffic, just move further western. I mean, it is what it is at the end of the day. I mean, the traffic on Route 9 isn't gonna change. It's there, it's staying here. Us, you know, doing 10 or 20 less units isn't really gonna make a difference. And if it wasn't this traffic, it would be commercial traffic or industrial traffic, which is far greater than this, far more dense. So we all agreed this was a compromise plan, and that's what we have here, is a compromise.
The thing is that when it was done 18, 19 months, 18 months ago, it was also done on the preparation of the 340B projects, which had a total of 586 units, and this is 200 and some odd units less than that. And that traffic study by the consultant and by Mr. De Petrie's consultant was not a traffic issue in the area also, so-
Look, I'm not saying-
I haven't read the new issue or anything, which we have to do, but we, like I stated before, when the consultant gives back to us, then the issues will come up or whatever, and we'll go forward with it from that point.
Right. I'm not saying that there won't be more traffic. That's evident, there's gonna be more traffic, there's gonna be more wait times. But, you know, there's 100 acres sitting there, I don't think anyone can expect it not to be developed, and it should be developed in the agreement that we all sat in and talked about for nine months.
Respectfully, we made these same objections back there, they went unattended, and we were told to wait till now to bring them up, so this is now when we're bringing them up again, and we're still not hearing much, we're hopeful for that. As far as the density, it's not as much as the density, all of a sudden we've gone to over 60% of three-bedroom housing, or three-bedroom condos, where it was ones and twos mostly before, which raises the traffic significantly. We went from 1,000 trips to 3,000 trips. That's a rather large jump, so to say that our concerns are unfounded at this point is a little bold. I'm also concerned, on another side besides traffic, is the density of those three-bedroom townhouses that have all of a sudden come into the project that we found out on the planning board recently that no one was aware of until then, at least on the public side. I can't speak for the board. When this project was originally done as a 40B, there was a feasibility study done to see if the town can handle that and the schools can handle that. I don't think that's been redone and readdressed. Can the school, can the system and the school system absorb that many families coming in over four years and maintain them? That needs to be addressed and studied as well, it hasn't been. It's one thing to bring one and two-bedroom things, but to bring three-bedrooms, this brings, we're talking, I think it was 80-plus, you have to assume 80-plus families with multiple children that we now need to absorb, our taxes have to pay, so any tax benefits the town are getting from these is now, is going to be sucked up and put right back into a school system that needs to now absorb this. Where's the feasibility study to make sure that the town can actually handle that? Traffic is one thing, safety is another, and again, Mr. De Petrie, we are not opposed to building this site. We expect it, we encourage it, we just want it done well. We'd like to see the town fight a little harder with you to go against Mass Dot and bring the access where it belongs, which is on Route 9, not on Flag Road. With that being said, if that was done, I don't think you'd have any objection in this room to getting it done. It's how it's being done and the safety that's going, not only to us, but the residents you're gonna put in here. It's their safety for the 380 some odd units worth of families that have a safety concern as well. That's what we're saying, we're not arguing the build, we're not even arguing, like I said at the last meeting, I actually like the design that came out, and you've made great strides with this. It's a safety matter for us and for the people coming in, and if the town would actually come up and fight with Mass Dot a little bit and get the access we need, this would be a much simpler and easier process and a better project overall.
Yeah, John Green, Tentara wrote, and same with me, I, you know, can respect where Bill's coming from, and it's not so much the density as it is the safety, right? So the town, I think, really needs to be prepared to fix Flag Road, to widen Flag Road, to provide a safer way to get onto Route 9, regardless of the project's built or not, right? The roads today, just, they can't even handle what's happening today. It's dangerous, Route 9 is dangerous. Flag Road to Route 9 is a dangerous spot. There should be, there should be a light out there, and somebody should take that up with Mass Dot. And that's not for the neighbors to do, that's for the town to do. Thank you.
As we go forward, and we haven't got there yet, but when we get forward into this, we will do have a discussion on doing some correction on Flag Road. We've already discussed it back a year ago, Jennifer and I wrote it, looked at it, and things, and it's something that has to go to the Highway Department and see about removing some trees and stuff that are, you know, sitting right on the edge of the hot top or whatever. But this is something that we get to that point, which we're not there just yet, it would be done, and it would definitely end up being a responsibility of the developer due to correct the issues on Flag Road. But we just, we're not there yet, and as soon as we get there, after we get through the major traffic study, then that'll be something that'll come up at that time. But we're just not there yet with the, you know, reconstruction of Flag Road.
Something we need to consider with the project, right?
Oh, definitely, it will, definitely when we get to that point.
Culverts, the trees, and a couple of places that-
Yeah, excuse me, sir, you have to use the mic.
Yeah, there's, there's more than one spot that is probably 17 feet wide. It's crazy, it's ridiculous. You can't, and people are going 37 miles an hour at each other in a 17-foot wide space. And you've got kids playing in their driveways, you've got people walking, you've got landscape trucks, you've got all sorts of stuff going on. The road needs, the road needs to be fixed. If we're gonna put the traffic on the road, the road needs to be fixed. Same thing with Route 9. Either that or that light, if you, if we talk about the light at Madison Place, you have to have some sort of a break in it, right? So if you don't want to add a light on Route 9, then keep that light red at both, at all four points so that people can actually get out. Because if not, nobody's ever gonna get out of there. You just, you have to think, right? We have to think about other ways to mitigate this, right? If Madison Place's light stays red at both sides for an extra minute, then people can get out. It doesn't, it just goes and it goes quick, and the people from Madison Place go 70 miles an hour right at you.
But as far as, there's issues with the state as far as timeframes on the lighting on Route 9. I mean, we have the same issue up in, up on Oak Hill Road, that the lighting gets changed by 30 seconds-
Turning like that, right.
Which backs the traffic an extra four miles because of 30-second timeframe, but that's a whole different thing for us to be able to look at right now. Yes, sir?
Imagine, yes, Donnie, 16 Bantry. I'd like to make a couple of comments, and I'm guessing we can address these a little bit further, once there's an opportunity for the peer review. But to go back to the previous peer review, some concerns were raised by the consultant who had commented that the growth rate was an underestimate on the previous study, and they felt that the growth rate was gonna be higher than what was projected. And also, there was some concerns raised about the full build for this project. The peer review study had looked at, I believe, predominant 40B, and it was not 500 units, but it was about 140 to 200, I believe. To make a comment to Mr. De Petrie, if 10 or 20 units are not gonna make that much of a difference in terms of their traffic or the overall project impact, then why not reduce it by that many numbers of units in your build?
Not going in.
That's fine. And also to make another comment, if you consider progress to tear down some of the natural beauty that South Row has, to tear down old growth trees on Flag that has been recommended by the current traffic study, and to put children who are on Flag going to try your school on a road that has no sidewalk, and these are 10, 11-year-old kids who probably don't have the best common sense in terms of, when it comes to safety, then I'm not sure I agree with you that that's progress. Progress to me is having a safe neighborhood, having safety for my children when they want to go to school, not having to deal with traffic and having the option of moving further west. Thank you.
Any further comments?
Our next step forward, excuse me, our next step forward will be that it'll go to peer review, and then it'll get back to us. A question as far as, for our next meeting for this particular issue, we're, I am presently planning that our next meeting be on January 6th, because the planning board and other boards will make their recommendations to us on the 4th, and then the 6th is that Wednesday. Due to the issue on the traffic and the reviews, we can either do it on that same meeting most likely, I would think. Excuse me.
Mr. Chairman, we'd like a little bit of time to get the comments back from the other boards, and be order, in order to-
If you're not giving your comments till the 4th.
So maybe the week after that.
Well, the thing is, what I think is that we can do that, but the other thing is, and what I've done already is, we've scheduled downstairs at the town hall as the fact of meeting every Wednesday night, every Wednesday night in the month of January, except for the 20th, because Mr. Eagle has gone away that-
No, the 27th.
The 27th. Mr. Eagle has gone away that week. So the thing is, we could have the meeting on the 6th and discuss the traffic review and stuff on that particular night.
Yeah, I mean, we'd need the report back from the peer review consultant, and we'd have to respond back to him.
Right. We should have that back by next week, he said, and then that would give you three weeks to respond to that, or-
Yeah, I mean, you wanna wait and see until we get-
It's up to you. I don't have a problem when you wanna meet.
Well, I just want time to respond to it.
When would you like to do it?
I just want to make sure that we have the information so we can respond back to come here and-
We would like to have the peer review response at least seven to 10 days before meeting so that our consultant can look at it.
Yeah, well, in talking to him, yes, this morning, he had made a statement, because I told him he's gonna, it's gonna go out to him tomorrow, that he said that we would have it back the week prior to Christmas, so it'd be on the 28th of December, we would have it. So if we had, you know, we can do the meeting on the 6th or the 13th?
He can't be on the 13th, so let's do it the 6th.
Okay, the 6th.
The 6th for traffic.
As long as we get the report back, yeah.
Say that again now?
The 6th for the traffic.
Traffic.
And then the 13th for the other board comments, which you aren't getting to the 4th, and we'll presume we'll get them on the 4th or 5th.
Right.
Then we can address those on the 13th. Does that work, Bill?
Yeah, yeah, provided we get the report back from the consultant.
So that's agreeable?
Yeah, those dates are good.
All right. So when we get, finish this meeting tonight, then we'll go forward and do that.
The traffic the 6th and then the 13th.
Good timing for these meetings.
We'll do that before we close the hearing tonight.
Okay, so traffic the 6th, boards the 13th, and the 20th.
The other issue is, we have invited the other town officials and department heads here, and do they have any comments they would like to make presently? So then, is there any other comments, Mr. Petrie, that, for tonight?
No, that's, that's all.
All right. All right, so then the thing is that we make an agenda, that we post a meeting for the 6th of January at 7 o'clock here, and the issue on that will be discussing traffic study and future scheduling-
Okay.
Also. So anything that comes up because- So anything that comes up, because I know that you're in present with Conservation and where we are with them and where that's going to go and the scheduling on that, and different things, because of the issue on the drawings not being completed until you get through the, on the drainage issues and stuff, so we can be able to review that also at the time. So we have a motion to continue the public hearing until the 6th of January 2016 at 7 o'clock.
As Tom always says, so moved.
Any further discussion?
Call.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion to close tonight's public hea, to just continue tonight's, close our meeting tonight, not the public
I'll make a motion to close our meeting tonight.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Good night.[1703.61]